Alrighty everybody, good evening. Today is December 15th, it's 7:30 and this is the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. And tonight here is our administrator, Chrissy O'Crean. We have a member, Mario Caravalli, Eric Son, Chair, Michelle Riebler, Associate Member, Jack Kelly, who's a member, and Larry Murphy, who's our liaison from the planning board. So with that, let's open the meeting and read the first.
Okay. Al Ward, 80 Northern Boulevard, the applicant is requesting a special permit finding for relief of Section 97-4D, 5C, 02, upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed project in order to renovate the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on the lot with an increase in height on the property located at 80 Northern Boulevard, Palm Island, Newbury, Mass. Assessors Matt Hughes, your approved lot 1 and 0. And this is a continuing from, continuation from November 17th.
So as we understand it, the applicant has submitted a request for continuation? And part of the reasoning for the continuation is the sort of not a clear answer from legal counsel on the town's stance? And several question, I asked several questions to town council about it. I think there's still more discussion to be had. And secondly, there was additional supplemental information that was just reviewed, just received from the butter's legal counsel, which I think was no small letter. Takes a minute to go over. So did they submit via email or?
Yes, we emailed this afternoon.
Okay, so they have a written item that states what they want to do? And so with that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until next month.
January 19th is our next meeting.
January 19th, 7:30?
Is there?
Second of the motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Alright, so that motion passes and will be continued. Please everyone receive a copy of the legal counsel letter.
Yes.
The email?
Yeah, through email, we can give a copy.
No, you receive via email.
Which is fine, save the paper.
Alright, I'll continue discussions with legal counsel.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Next, Salvatore Andrew Rosello, the applicant, 16 Green Street, the applicant is requesting a special permit for relief of Section 97-10D, 2C detached accessory apartment of the Newbury zoning bylaw and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw to allow the proposed project in order to renovate the existing detached garage on the lot to convert it to an in-law suite apartment on the property located at 16 Green Street, Newbury, Mass. 01951, assessors Matt Hughes, 09 Lot 72.
Alrighty, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and talk to us about it?
Okay, I'm not really sure what to do.
Tell us what you want to do.
Yeah, so we moved in, um, in August or so, in our in-laws, not in-laws, thank you. Yeah, we were in Beverly Farms for 15 years, in La Delaure Shore, and we were looking for a place to, a larger place to accommodate his parents moving in the house. So we found a spot we love, um, they moved in with us a couple of weeks after we moved in, they're in our house now, but we, the plan all along, the hope was to be able to finish the existing detached garage for them, which is just under 1,000 square feet. We're gonna put in an elevator for them, his dad's 94. So we're just trying to find a nice space for them to be able to live with us with some assistance.
Okay. So your application has a site plan that has a living area with a garage below?
Yes.
And so part of the drawings, um, the access to the apartment with a balcony is totally from the exterior?
No, it'll be, um, through, through the garage, there'll be an elevator inside with a second egress with the stairs off of it, the deck.
So elevator, stairs, with deck?
Yep.
Okay. And with that, in terms of the accessory apartment, because it's existing, because detached, building inspector denied your, your permit.
Correct.
Sent you to us and for 97-10D, which is the section which governs this, are you, did you guys read this, are you familiar with this?
I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, so in the town, under accessory apartments, there are, there's a purpose and intent statement, which you meet the purpose and state intent. Develop housing units within residential neighborhood that are appropriate for households of various stages of their life cycle for multi-family, multi-generational families. Balance of and diversity of population, encourage creation of additional moderately priced rental units, protect the stability, property values and residential character of a neighborhood. And I'm just reading part sentences, the whole intent. So you seem to make.
I actually didn't, I just didn't know what the code number was.
Okay, so then the next section is accessory apartment applicability, then there's a section on general requirements, and then there's two sections, one for attached and one for detached.
Yes.
So I think what we typically do is just read through the requirements and discuss them.
Sure.
I have not read on this, I don't know if anybody else has.
No, I think it was first one was wrong.
Okay.
I'm not sure that the drawings are with the email, Eric, or if they were, I couldn't open. But I, so I guess I'm saying I didn't see this for the first time too.
I had, I did see it. Was that special or what?
I'm gonna find that email, 'cause I proved Peter wrong this morning.
Okay, so.
I have my own copy abroad, if you can look at it.
No, it's just that we're, we're just stating that we've looked at it, so it may take us an extra second to read it. Otherwise, we try to pre-read and you'll be quicker about what we're doing, but.
Definitely.
Mario's having a scratchy cough, would you mind, like, reading accessory apartments?
Sure, general requirements?
Well, go to the applicability, section two.
Okay.
Start at the top.
Okay, oh, section two, okay. Accessory apartments applicability, accessory apartments are deemed to be either within or detached from an existing or new single-family dwelling. Accessory apartments within an existing or new owner occupied single-family dwelling may be authorized by the building commissioner with the issuance of a building permit when the conditions and requirements of 97, 10, D, 3, and 4 below are met. Accessory apartments in an accessory structure detached from an existing or new single-family dwelling may be authorized by the zoning board of appeals with granting of a special permit issued when the conditions and requirements of 97-10D, 3, and 5, which are below, are met. A property owner may appeal to denial of a building permit for an accessory apartment within an existing or new owner occupied single-family dwelling by seeking a variance from the zoning board.
Alright, now we're on to general requirements.
Okay, so.
Yep.
General requirements, the accessory apartment will be complete separate dwelling unit that contains both permanent kitchen, bathroom, and its own means of egress.
Yes.
Yes. The owner of record of the residence in which the accessory apartment is created must continue to occupy at least one of the dwelling units as their primary residence except for a bona fide temporary absence of six months or less.
Yes.
For the purpose of bylaw, the term owner shall mean one or more individuals residing in dwelling unit who holds title or who the dwelling unit is the principal residence. The gross interior floor area of the primary dwelling excluding unfinished attic, basement, garage, and porch shall be at least 1,700 square feet.
1600.
Oh, 16, I'm sorry.
Yes.
1,600 square feet.
So do you have, is there an assessors card that states the square footage on it?
I added it.
You added it. Value of units versus square footage. Where's that, on the card?
Halfway down the first column, narrative description, with the flatboard exterior and 5,734.
Oh, 5,734, okay, so let's just note that there's.
What was it, five?
5,734.
Alright.
Okay, E, the gross interior floor area of the accessory apartment excluding unfinished attic, basement, garage, and porch shall not be greater than 35% of the gross interior floor area of the primary dwelling as defined by Section 97, 10D, 3D, above or, or 1,000 square feet of gross interior floor area, whichever is less.
Yeah, it's right up the left.
Okay. Should we complete the, this section here?
Well, what says house and then it says detached, is it 2,000 on two levels of the garage? So it's 1,000 square feet for each, each level?
Yeah, it said three car detached, so it's the same, yeah, should be the same size of the floor.
But we're only finishing the second.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at, 'cause your, the application says 2,000, so someone might read this to think that your unit is 2,000 when.
Sorry.
It's only half of that, and so that's, that's, okay. Alright, we need to fix that, right?
Um, no, no more than one accessory apartment may be created on a lot, there shall be no more than two dwelling units in a structure and no more than two dwelling units on a single-family lot. There shall be no borders or lodgers within either unit of dwelling on a lot with an accessory apartment?
No.
Okay. Accessory apartment may not have more than two bedrooms, the total number of bedrooms in the primary dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit combined may not exceed the capacity of the permitted septic system per total five requirements.
It is a two-bedroom, we have had a city engineer come over and look at it and they needed to put in a new septic for expanding system.
The main house has four, is that what it says here?
Four.
Four bathrooms?
Um, it has, it has more than four.
Okay. Well, in assessors card it says four, oh, I see four plus a three-quarter and a half, I got you.
It's a little hard to, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's a little hard to hear everything.
Okay.
Previously, I guess I heard two-bedroom and the septic has to be evaluated for, I missed that part.
Combined may not exceed the capacity of the permitted septic system per total five, so whatever the capacity of the septic system is by bedroom, correct?
Yes, bedroom and total square footage of the house, I think.
So you're planning to put a new septic system?
Yes, yes, it's, it's an additional septic, so they, they're about to dig for the soil samples and set it to the 45 testing.
Oh, so they're gonna do a second system for.
I think, so there's a few options and I guess it depends on, there is also the soil samples, whether they expand the existing or put in a secondary septic or action.
And how, um, how is that documented in the, in the application? Have you?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so any, we get to a motion and a condition?
Yeah.
Like, like do you confirm or have confirmation of that? Is it stated?
Confirm, um, what was that stated, the septic?
Just say that the, as per condition that the, um, confirmation of the septic system existing and meets the requirements of section, of part H.
Alright.
Alright, we're on I, right? So the existing house and the accessory apartment shall comply with all applicable health, safety, building, and other applicable codes in effect at the time of the granting of a building permit and a special permit where applicable. Have you discussed this with the building inspector? Has he seen your plans?
So.
Okay.
Well, I think there's a letter here from Eric denying it, so.
But Debbie, did you discuss, besides denying the accessory apartment, just understanding the construction or the needs? 'Cause you, you have a plan and you have a site plan, but it's not like you have construction documents for what you're intending here. Do you have a?
Yeah, I don't have construction documents.
Okay, so what we're, what we're assuming is that you're presenting, you typically like to see construction documents to know that that, that's what you're intending to do?
Correct.
Understanding how design sometimes moves along as you work through things, and we're not a work-through kind of granting authority, we like to know that, that when we approve this and sign this, and this is what gets submitted and recorded, that this is what you're doing.
Sure.
So another condition might be something of final.
Construction documents?
Yeah, we do, we do actually have a contract from our contractor.
Okay.
I didn't know it was a hard thing, so that we can submit it.
Just to note that she picked up a conversation with her and took a different view of the project with her, and didn't see any problems.
Okay, and that's kind of where I was going, since we just got one plan and either flagged something or refused reading or something more.
And I did ask them that again today, and see if they can foresee any issues.
Okay, the proposed accessory apartment shall not violate any D restrictions applicable to the subject lot for residence. The applicant shall certify in a notarized statement to the best of his or her knowledge that there are no such D restrictions.
So.
So we probably get a statement on that.
Yeah.
Utilities such as water, electric, gas necessary for the accessory dwelling unit shall be an extension of the existing utilities serving the principal single-family dwelling. So utilities that come from the street would go to the main house, primary house, and then would be extended to the second house, and there's not separate connections back to the street which would divide them so that, you know, it just.
Right.
Continuation of the owner owns the property and the owner is the one in control of the building that's, or structured.
Yes, we've already evaluated the HVAC and there's enough coming in from the natural gas to just extend it.
Okay. Is, are there, it's a garage, so is there just a little electrical that goes out there or?
Um, there's electrical in there now, but we're going to extend the gas.
A minimum of one parking space shall be required for the accessory apartment, parking spaces shall be located so that both the principal, principal dwelling unit and the accessory apartment shall have at least one parking space with direct and unimpeded access to the street without passing through a parking space designated to serve the other dwelling unit.
They don't drive, but it is a three-car garage.
Okay, so there's, there's a driveway up?
Yeah, the driveway extends from the street to our, to the three-car garage. And in addition to that, we have, how many spaces outside? Two, plus the three, there's about five exterior spaces plus the garage.
Okay, so now that's the end of the first general requirements, and now there's section, that was section three, now we're on section five, which is the detached accessory apartments. All detached accessory apartments shall meet the general requirements set forth, which we just read in section three, and the following specific conditions.
The minimum lot size for accessory apartments in detached structure construction after the date of adoption of this accessory apartment bylaw, May 21, 2013, shall be 60,000 square feet. And the minimum lot size for the accessory apartment in detached structures in existence as of the date of adoption of this accessory apartment bylaw, May 21, 2013, shall be 40,000 square feet.
So the stated square footage on the lot is 50,529.6? How's that? This is just D, the post-reference, doesn't have the square footage on it.
This plan does right here, this one says.
I can't read that.
52,560 here. I have a question about, about this plan right here. It says, um, let me see if the date, I listen.
06, I was looking at the same thing.
Okay, yeah, it says the existing residence is two-story, two-family, it says? Is, okay.
Let me read.
So maybe it was at some point and then converted back to a single family?
Um, you don't, there's, you didn't hear about the house, but you know, many, many decades ago, they said it was more of a boarding house during the depression.
Oh, okay.
And then it was renovated with a previous owner, so I'm not sure how long it's been single, it went on, but more than 10 years.
And it looks like at one point these two lots were owned by the same entity, but you're only talking about the lot on the left now, the lot in the one.
Okay.
Was it, yes.
Yeah, a lot, so me too.
Yeah. Yeah, so this, this says on the card, building permits 9/7/2006, description, manual, amount 150, last visit was 10/19/2007, converted to single family.
Single family, yeah.
So we can cross off.
Single family narrative, it's good to know.
Okay, thank you. Keep going.
Where accessory apartments are permitted in existing detached accessory structures, any interior modification to the accessory structure shall be consistent with the appearance and purpose for which the structure was originally built. If an accessory apartment is incorporated into the new accessory structure, the new structure shall be compatible in style with principal dwelling on the same lot.
Yeah, I mean, we're not changing that, so we certainly want it to be compatible.
The proposed building scale shall be consistent with the single-family residential character of a lot and of surrounding neighborhood?
Yeah, same scale.
The abutting property shall be protected from the proposed use.
Is the deck and the stair existing now, or is that?
It is not.
Where will the deck be?
Um, the, as you face the garage, it's in the back facing the pool, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the property.
No.
You know where that is?
Keep facing west.
Thank you.
The abutting property shall be protected from the purpose used on the site by provisions of adequate buffers, screening against light sight and sound. And deviations from condition requirements, I don't need to say it's six.
Uh, what was?
Five?
Oh, right. Oh, it's just under and it meets, and then there's submission requirements, and then there's occupancy requirements, and that's it. So with that, if you guys think for a minute, I'm going over to the public and then conduct the discussion. Okay, so is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project? Wait a minute, wait a minute, you, you are here and you can, yes, you can speak in favor.
Me.
My parents, we'd love to have them.
Okay, so we can just note that Salvatore spoke in favor and you have the address. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition of the project or has a question about the project?
Questions I have, I'm with Darrell, what do you think?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, do you want me to stand?
You don't have to stand, but you have to say your name and address, please.
Sure, sure, I'm Ray Jingeris, I live at 12 Green Street, so I'm in the butter, the driveway portion.
Sure.
So just a couple of questions. First of all, I think it's great moving family, yes, bringing your parents in, it's a great thing.
That makes two of them.
I'll let you just go.
And certainly as an abutter, you know, I'm always just concerned, you know, first
was the short-term rental, which I see you have language in bylaw that addresses the use of, you know, short-term rentals. The other is regarding the definition, which I think you're using accessory apartment as the definition, is there a restriction on who can use the accessory apartment?
Uh, there's not, no, you don't have to be related to use it, they, they can rent it out in the, in the beginning, it does talk about recognizing the needs of housing of the town that are changing zoning bylaws, excuse me, to be crafted. For, it's, it's in essence trying to create other opportunities for housing within the town without having to promote new development or more density. And as we read in the beginning, for family, and if it's within keeping with the requirements, then it, you know, that, that's how it's defined. And the bylaws were added, and then the bylaws, I think two years later were adjusted after several applications to make sure it was clear. I think the intent of utilities going from the primary to the secondary has, has been some issues in new development where, or major sort of renovations where it seemed like it really was a separation, and the intent is, is that this is basically an apartment on the, on the property.
True. So, you know, and I read, read the notice, I mean, it does give the indication, it's pretty in line, we've got a senior in-laws watching it, or using their wheelchair, so I believe it. But you always worry about, it's the next one, right? That's what it always is. It's such a special permit in Massachusetts, let you write anything with a special permit. You know, I personally would like to see that it states it's for, you know, family member use.
Understood, and although that, that is one of the key points, it is also to provide alternate housing for a diverse population. That's, that's stated right up front. And I don't know how the other board members feel, but I, I don't think in terms of a property for the size of a one-bedroom, if it was a two-bedroom and it had a different, maybe, location, I mean, there is a pool in the back and there is a family that's living in the house and also wants to use the pool, it would seem that it's, it's cited and conceived that they would, they would keep close concerns on who was using that apartment now and in the future. It's not like it was off distance and it's behind some trees and then it's, it's whoever they rented to, like it's a different house. That's just my assessment of looking over the plans and the site plan.
I don't, I don't disagree with your perspective about this, on the butter and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for future owners other than to say we bought this because we're making plans to take care of his parents, and my parents were about 20 years younger than his, and we have teenage boys. We feel that this apartment will be used for quite some time and not rent, rent it out, you know, our plan was to stay here. That's why we moved, we had a home that we loved and we wanted to be able to stay there and we needed more space, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't sound like the applicant is in disagreement with my suggestion.
True, but I don't, I don't know if we were to make a, a condition that the applicant might then not, not, and we'd be discussing it further. We, and I think the bylaws were updated to reflect the primary owner must live in one of the two units. The other way around is the, they could be living in the garage in a one-bedroom and they could be renting out the whole house to a whole other family on the property. So your concern is noted and we certainly can discuss it. You, sir?
Yes, my name's Darrell Colton, 20 Green Street, first off, I briefly met you when you moved in, I think I poured a bottle of wine and I'm sorry to.
How was it? It was great. Just the only one.
No problem, just talking about that.
And I apologize that this is the second time of the meeting. So I, first off, I love the idea of being helpful to your family and we are, you know, just wanna know more about sort of the project and how it might impact our house and the neighborhood in general. Specific concerns are similar to Reggie. We somewhat worried about what happens with the next owners, can it be rented out? Secondly, our property is about five feet from this garage. So this garage previously did not have anybody in it. So this garage previously did not have anybody in it. And now there's gonna be people living there. And if, you know, it will decrease our privacy. We're concerned about noise and additional lights, external utilities. So those are some various concerns we have. We have a pool also, and our pool is not very far from the fence and the garage. So it's gonna be, it'll be very close to our house. I think it's not a good form. I think it's five, five, six feet.
Okay, they don't have a site plan that shows adjacencies. Is it on that, that first plan? No?
Yeah, so the property is surrounded by either fence or natural trees and treary that are quite tall. And so we're, when we asked about the deck that is facing the back that faces the brado, so it's, it's very private and that's our intention to throw them in front of us. But I mean, it's, it's, it's two elderly people, so it's not like they're gonna be throwing parties there.
True, but in the future, it might be, it might be, it might be yourselves.
Yeah, hopefully. Come. I mean.
Pool is very visible from that deck.
It is, and we can hear it when you have people outside too. I mean, we're, we're in an intermodal location, so I think, you know, we do what we can to respect each other's privacy, but this is an existing structure.
Understanding of the existingness of, the argument can be made equally to you that your house is too close to the property line for their use and they're too close to the property line for you, your, your use, it works, it does work both ways. It does talk about the appropriateness of screening. And I think there's some additional items that would be good in order to have on paper for sort of final assessment. And so if there's, so do you have any more questions? I didn't mean to cut you off or?
Well, I mean, I guess, I mean, number one, I guess I'm just surprised that, you know, I would have thought that maybe you had a discussion with the neighbors about what your plans were. So it kind of took us by surprise. We, we wanna be good neighbors and we wanna, wanna not obstruct. At the same time, we're a little concerned there's gonna be maybe extra lights, extra noise. You know, are there any, you know, where is the elevator gonna be? Is that gonna make noise? It's a very quiet spot.
Yeah, I mean, regarding extra noise, they're already living with us. We're allowed to have them live with us. We can have whoever we need in the house, so it's, there's not extra noise.
Sure, but when they're living in the, over the garage, it will be five feet from our property. That's very different.
Sure.
And also, if putting in an elevator, an elevator might make noise, I can imagine. And that, you know, just wanna learn more about it.
Have you seen the plans?
No.
Okay, so why don't you guys come up and take a copy and take a look at them?
Sure. As I said, just learned about it from the letter.
So there's the site plan. There's the plan. My understanding is the balcony is on the back. All right, the three-part garage is up front. That's how you guys see it.
It's the common drive.
Is that your common drive?
There's one window here.
This driveway serves this house and this house. One, one over here.
There's one window on the side that's, that's parallel, so you're a property one. And then the elevator is actually the far corner, far away.
Yeah, our property one is over here. It's like closer to our house.
Would be a far corner.
Is there any extra utilities or?
No, it's not being routed from existing utilities.
So there's one meter, right?
Yes.
For gas and for electric.
Yeah, we're not, there's no additional windows for replacing one window.
Is there any additional lighting?
Exterior lighting? No.
There might be a back. There's gonna be a light on the back.
On the deck?
On the deck, yeah.
But not on the side of that?
No.
Is there a way to get a copy of that?
Uh, yes.
I can mail it to you.
Yes, if you provide your email, Kristy, she can email you the whole document package if you'd like. Public record, so all packages available.
But your, your own concern is the lights, so people who use it after us?
Well, both, both. I have similar concerns as Ray about, you know, you know, people using after, and people renting it. And I have a concern about noise and additional light. And privacy, frankly.
I mean, the, the privacy is established with what we bought, right? I mean, that's existing conditions and we're not adding on to it and these are people that already live with us, so.
Understood, and, and the, the thing about the, the bylaws and building codes is people come in and present very personable uses to things. And we do take those to heart and we do listen, but at the end of the day, the bylaw is, is for you, it's for them, it's for the next person that buys the house. And so some people who overly personalize what they're doing or the right to do it because it is so personal, isn't actually favorable or favorable with the bylaw because the bylaw, the building code just wants to set an equal level. So.
And my understanding is that, as you mentioned with diversity and addressing the town population and needs of housing, is that this could very much be used to rent out.
Yeah, I, I think the, the, and I'll open up. Do you guys have any more?
Well, it's interesting you bring this up.
But first off, I think you had a lot of other people there, Mr. Chairman, but the notice removed the in-law status and just said they were adding an apartment. I think as I talked to some of the inhabitants in the hundreds, they didn't realize that it was just an apartment.
It's, it's for in-laws.
No?
She just said it has to be.
No, I'm saying what the town laws are.
But.
And you understand what our questions.
The application doesn't restrict it to use for relatives. Correct.
That's it, that's a town bylaw, correct. And that was what we looked up when we bought it. That's not our intention, but that's the town you live in.
So we're saying, we're all saying a piece of the, the same thing, that it is an accessory apartment for use of other people that do not own or live in one of the primary or secondary drawing on the property. Two, in terms of the statements, the statement is making statements about families, it is making statements about diverse population, it is making statements about additional housing and varied housing within the town so that we don't all end up with huge houses and no small houses for a diverse population. So that's all within here. Appreciate all your, your comments and concern. Does the board have any questions or comments? Jack?
I read this section before I came in this evening and I think it's pretty clear that the town is promoting the idea of having multi-generational, maybe use that term, uses. And I think that, you know, assuming we get some more detailed drawings, it'd be nice to see exactly what it is, because I had to puzzle out where, where that gentleman in the back lives. I didn't get it until he came up here. If we had, had some more detailed drawings, but I'm inclined to be in favor.
Joe?
I don't, I don't think I have any questions. I, um, I mean, there's a couple of dead spaces in the plan, I guess, and maybe it doesn't really matter. I guess just making sure that.
Or is it a sloped roof with a gable in the front for the bedroom?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Is it dead space that's there?
It's dead space, yeah. Just another storage space.
Okay, so there's no chance of being, of making that into another living space?
No, that was our intention when we bought the house. We saw that space and it looked perfect to, to dash off.
I'm going to go over it, Jack. I'm going to go over it, Jack. Any comments?
So in terms of the plans, and there's some questions raised, that I think the, the group thing to do is to ask you for a little bit more documentation of, of the intent here so that it's clear what exactly, and, and in terms of that, I think the, we'd just like to make sure we get some overall dimensions on the size because they're just not on the plan. Two, we'd like to know about the septic system, to know that you're actually doing it or had some assessment and if there's some estimate or anything that shows that it's in process in action or, or that you filed with the board of health, then we'd like to know that. I think the site plan, even a, even a Google satellite shot of the neighborhood so that we can understand the whole neighborhood and understand what other people are, are saying and where the houses are. Excuse me, and it is, these are all unique properties and especially this one that used to be one, it's now carved up to the three in order to get where it is. And you have a sizable lot at fifty-two where the average is forty. So we'd like to, and I would submit some photos that show the property line, any screening and, and what, you know, what's, what's happening along here.
Sure.
And then it would be good, whoever drew this up, if they could draw an elevation or on that plan, you could show the lights. And if there's a, a way for the, do you have an architect or?
We have a contractor and a designer, yeah.
Okay, so if you could show us the light fixture and show that it's like shielded or somehow could be angled, then the people's concerns and questions could be answered.
Deed restriction. Do you have any restrictions on the deed? About proof of that?
Oh, so we need a, as, as technicalities we do, excuse me, do you know, you can just read that section in there?
Just the beginning.
There are no deed restrictions to, to, to the property and it, I would think it would be shown on this, which.
What do you hear? Proposal accessory apartment shall not violate any deed restrictions applicable to the subject lot of residents. Applicants shall certify a notarized statement that to the best of his or her knowledge that there are no deed restrictions.
So Gail Smith is your registered professional land surveyor who looked up the deed and the book in order to, to get this plan?
Yes.
They, they could simply make that statement?
Okay.
Since they, they're certifying that. All right, so we went over the unit size, we went over the new septic. Talked about utilities, talked about the garage and parking, site plan, screening, exterior elevation. I guess the plan, this plan should actually note what is, what is new and just what is new and we'll assume the rest is existing, at least on the exterior.
Sure.
And then the lights. Okay. And then with that, I mean, there are, there are concerns and I guess the concerns are, you know, for, for screening. And so those, understanding what's there, understanding that it's existing. And the idea, or the question at hand, or the question that seems to be proposed at night is if, if there was other, other people that are related to you that were renting this, how would, how would the neighbors be protected? How, how might you be protected and/or the adjacencies of, I mean, you have a, a pool and a pool house in the back and if you had somebody, it seems like they would probably get used to the pool as much as you since they're even closer to it. So that's what we're looking for.
How do we, how do we address that? That's an existing condition that people lose.
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, there are outdoor parties at the pools already. I don't understand how it's a concern.
We, I guess the question, the question is, we, if this is to be used for in-laws and there's no expectation of someone who's not an in-law, how can we help people get comfortable with that?
Well, there is a, a restriction that can be put on a motion if a favorable motion was made and the conditions are X, Y, and Z. One of them could be that they don't have family related people. And that could appease the neighbors, but we think you as homeowners would carefully consider what you're.
Right.
Fearing of.
I just didn't really think it would be a concern because it's an existing structure. No, people don't live in the garage, but there's a hockey rink in there, so I imagine that also generated some noise from the previous owner, so I just.
I guess I was kinda mentioning the pool and the pool house is a, is a favorable argument for use of the yard and the lot for, for, for different people.
Yeah.
For two different sets of people that if everything was off the one side or the lot was set up like an hell and you were never gonna.
Yeah.
Intermix with people, I mean, you're, you're basically proposing an apartment.
We don't want people in our pool.
I don't want anyone in my pool. We didn't buy this house to rent it out, but I, I under, I can't make guarantees of.
And just thinking the next person that would buy the house and how they would use it and how the neighbors would, would feel. And we do have other people that tell us it's for in-laws and then we find ads about beach rentals and things like that.
You have seen my in-laws.
No, I'm just saying.
Who live there?
Then everybody wants to make sure that, that, and what is presented sometimes in terms of people to get things. And so we're just.
Yeah.
Trying to make sure that everybody understands what's going on, that concerns are raised. And if there's, and there can be anything to alleviate concerns is for the better.
Sure.
That make sense?
Absolutely.
Yep. And I'd have to say from our reading and the understanding that they are pretty much within the guidelines of what's here and we're asking for more documentation in order to make sure that what is presented here is, is seen by everybody and then recorded by everybody. That's how we see it. So I, I would say, you know, we, we haven't discussed the motion, we haven't made a motion, we haven't talked about it favorably for you. And so what I would say is that you, that we request a continuance the next month to, what we say, January nineteenth. And if you could submit the additional information, the sooner the better so that we can get it. It can be posted, it's been public and other people can access it. And then we can have, you can finish the discussion if it means.
Sure. I think everything you request we have except we haven't addressed exterior lighting because it's not a big part of the plan.
No, but you could imagine.
So that's the only thing that we need to, otherwise we could probably thwart everything right away.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so with your understanding, we're gonna make a motion to continue to next month.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to continue the meeting so to provide necessary documents related to overall plans, the dimensions, septic confirmation requirements, site plan, and information on outdoor lighting and.
And existing screening or?
Existing screen.
And that would be continued to January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven thirty P M. here at Town Hall. Are you discussion on that? Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So will be continued next, next one. Kristy, do they have to sign something tonight or?
If I could get their emails so I can send them the information, that would be great.
Okay, but the applicant doesn't have to sign for the continuance?
No. Yeah, we just make the motion to continue.
All right, we'll discuss that.
Another note, like to commend all the parties for the civil tone of the discourse. It's not always the case at these hearings. Hope it continues as you are neighbors.
As neighbors, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate your attending.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And emails and files.
Thank you very much.
I'm thinking in my throat. You need some milk and beer.
Thank you, Kristy. I know you took a note, so you helped me with that next step.
No problem. Hi.
Motion to close the meeting?
We have one more.
And a G and then.
But Ray might want to put his own.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was working on that. David, you got, you got to be moving in.
We're, we're still going up.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Okay, so one additional piece of business. It's not for public discussion, for public meeting. So I received a letter and a phone call from the Think House people. And they are still taking, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife is taking time to complete their exchange of products. So they're running up and asking for an extension. My advice is that they have their attorney talk to the town council and just talk legally. Understood our motions. Since we've been, since we updated the form, carried the conditions, carried a listed statement that wasn't always the case previously, but there is a timeline for filing and for completing, for filing the motion and decision that was made. So I think one of the things we probably don't do is, is continue indefinitely. So I will talk to, well, I guess we'll read the decision, we'll advise them to submit, to present at the next meeting in January. And then we'll discuss it. Make sense? All right, motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.